See where we're going. We want to make sure we're recording and they're, is he, is he good now? Great, okay. Okay, we're back. Next item on the agenda is the county mill property donation. Gentlemen, if you could state, state for the public your names and positions, thanks.
Sure, Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration.
Steve Miller, Director for County Recreation Parks Tour.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, yes, good evening. So, I came before you at the October 3rd council meeting to present a proposed donation of land. We will touch on a recap and some of that in the presentation. We provided a draft presentation in the brief book. We've made a few tweaks from that in the time between. I would like to start off with some brief drone footage of the property that we've taken. And when he switches over, I will start.
Wait for, okay.
So, the view starts at the Henry Parker complex with one of our new turf fields. It then, as we, as we move along, we then fly over the low portion of the creek. And Councilman Joe Holloway mentioned, you know, that is, that is a very low spot if you walk back there. There's some hiking and mountain bike trails that can get you pretty close to it.
Is the property right now where you see the greener vegetation?
Yes, so, so the trees are shorter there because they were, they were harvested. I'm not sure what, what year, but it was fairly recently. So, what we're looking at is mostly young, young pines.
Well, that's what I was asking earlier, whether it could be harvested. Someone told me that there was no, no forest there that could be harvested, so this property can be harvested.
It was harvested, yes.
Probably in 20 years, it might be harvested.
Yeah, but it's still young, young pines.
So, in 20 years, we get our investment back.
If, if you look at it now, you'll see one of the two stormwater ponds. I described them as borrow pits previously, and I can, I can explain. There was a method to their madness. Where we are now, this farm field is not part of the property. The property line is at the trees, and then it goes forward into the video.
That's the access, right?
Yes, this, this is the primary access. It's currently blocked off. We, we get to it along the railroad. This is another view of one of the, one of the ponds. And you can see where people have driven, driven there. There has been some dumping along the way, but that can all be easily cleaned up. But it's, again, mostly, mostly young pines. And if you look at the soil, that is sandy material.
Is the material down at the bottom of those ponds, is that all sand?
Where the, where the ponds are dug are complex. It's a loamy sand. And, and basically, loam is a mixture of sand, silt, and clay. And loamy sand is basically sand with trace amounts of silt and clay. So, it's not pure sand. But as I, I have a slide on the soils, and I can go into that. So, with that, I will get started. The property is located on the, basically, north central part of the county. As, as mentioned previously, it is adjacent to the Henry Parker complex, as, as seen in the video. Some background on the donation. Again, the county was approached by the landowners interested in donating the parcel. The donation is contingent on the transfer occurring prior to December 29th of this year for tax write-off on their, their end. County was to have the property appraised by an IRS qualified appraiser, and that has been completed. The county is to handle any title examination and deed prep, and that can be handled by our law department. And county to cover county and state real estate taxes for the 2017-2018 tax year. I have a slide touching on the county taxes, but the state taxes are, I believe, are in the $2,000 range. Some details on the property. There are three contiguous parcels totaling 234.67 acres. Pardon me if I say 235, I'm going to round up just for ease. The property appraised at $1,060,000, which is a little over $4,500 an acre. It's located within the city of Salisbury Corporate Boundary, and it is zoned R-8A and conservation. The conservation is basically along the creek where the, the low-lying property sits. R-8A is basically a high-density residential zoning within the city. It allows for 8,000 square foot parcels. And what I failed to mention last time, it also allows for multifamily uses. That is the capital A part of the R-8A. Currently, there are no utilities going to the property. So, it could not support that designation until water and sewer is provided. And to be honest, I think utilities from Delmar are closer than current city utilities. I mentioned the ponds, and you could see in the drone footage that there, there were some ponds there. And again, I called them borrow pits previously. The, the material dug for those stormwater ponds was used for the bypass. However, the shape of them was non-uniform because there was a subdivision that was laid out with those. And the concept is, is not a popular stormwater design because excavation can, can be expensive unless you have a home for it. In the case, of this case, but their intention was to dig it down to where there was no water. Sort of a dry pond concept. And it would be big enough for recreational facilities, playgrounds, or sports fields for the neighborhood. That, that being said, when you'd have a rain, the 16-acre and 21-acre properties were, were not likely to actually have that much water in them. Again, this isn't a, a concept I'm too familiar with, but that's how it's been explained to me. So, they were, they were stormwater ponds, not borrow areas.
They don't really have water in them.
There, there is some water because they dug down, and that, that's something I'll touch on. Depth to groundwater is around 20 feet. So, it's super well-drained, sandy, sandy soil, 20 feet down to hit groundwater. And that's about where they've dug, they've dug these ponds down 15 to 20 feet in some areas. With the exception of the creek buffers, the site is mostly comprised of young pines. You saw that in, in the video where there's a distinction between the older taller trees in the low-lying areas and the younger trees in the bulk of the property. And as, as I mentioned previously, a portion of the site falls within the Paleo Channel. Okay, touching on the soils, what, what I have here is a soil map. And the color code is basically a hydrologic soil group, and I can touch on that. The site, the majority of the site is either sand or loamy sand, as discussed earlier. The northern part of the site happens to be the loamy sand part where the ponds are. And then, as you go closer to Henry Parker, you are at pure sand. Again, extremely well-drained with 20 feet to groundwater. And the, the little table I have at the bottom left, the grading for hydraulic soil, hydrologic soils ranges from A to D. A means sand drains, drains great. D means could be clay, or it could be some sort of high organic, I'll say muck, that it does not, is not conducive to draining. You tend to get wetlands in the D soils and tend to not have wetlands in the A soils. Although they're not the bulk of the site, you see some AD, BD, they can swing either way depending on how inundated they are. Continuing, continuing on to wetlands, the state and federal governments provide wetland maps. Now, as, as I say here, a delineation would be needed to confirm that there's no other wetlands, but they're good guides. One color, I believe the, the green is the National Wetland Inventory. And then, the bluish-green happens to be the state. As you can see, they're all located in the low-lying area. So, in the bulk of the property tends to be high sandy soils. And I'll touch on the, the elevation in the next slide. Okay, topography. I provided larger maps to you in your, in your brief books. And it's hard to see the, the numbers on here, and same, same for the citizens at home. But topography is basically a map of elevations. The closer the lines are, the steeper, the steeper the terrain. So, this is the, the northern part of the property, and you can see the two ponds outlined by the circle. So, again, they, they were not dug as a borrow, borrow pit. They, they were dug more as part of a residential layout. They were dug, again, as, as mentioned previously, basic, in, in some cases, to the groundwater level. So, about 20 feet down, and then some, some other parts, not so much. So, so, and, and I'll come back to the ponds briefly. I think what this map shows is the, the main, like, the center of the parcel. And what's, what's critical about this is it has a high point elevation of 48 feet. The elevations for the bulk of the site are comparable to or higher than Henry Parker. We're talking five to eight feet higher, higher elevation than where Henry Parker is now. And sand, so this is, this is ideal, ideal ground. When you get to the, the creek areas, that's when it becomes unusable. It drops quickly, and it's consistently wet. Okay, this is one of the slides that was not in the brief book because it, I guess with the time constraints, we were, we sent the draft. This was something that was brought up. The, the annual county taxes that we would lose by accepting this donation is to the tune of $18,585.36 a year. This is based on a sitting, city zoning, R-8A, which I mentioned previously, with a state assessed value of 1.761 million. That's $700,000 more than what our appraisal came in at. Looking over a 20-year period, it, it's, it's, I, I wouldn't recommend speculating too far. But, but looking at a 20-year period, by accepting the donation and giving up our taxes, we are essentially, I'll say, paying for the property in unpaid taxes. And if you look at that over a 20-year period, assuming a four-and-a-half percent growth rate, you get a present value of $252,000, which equates to a little over $1,000 per acre.
That's only if nobody ever built on it. If somebody built something on it, it'd be more taxes.
Sure, sure, if, if it was developed, again.
That assessment's going to go down anyway. I mean, that assessment would naturally go down with the new appraisal.
They, they will submit, if, if the donation isn't accepted, they'll submit the new appraisal, and we'll, we'll have less taxes by, by that percentage. So, so looking over a 20-year period, we're looking at, we're paying $1,000 an acre with, with these assumptions. The other financial consideration I would, I would like council to consider is that the stormwater ponds still contain suitable fill material. It's mostly sand. In the case of the ponds, it's sand with some silt and clay. Doing rough calculations, this is assuming a two-to-one slope, and our best excavator long stick without pumping water can go down 25 feet. There's about 1.3 million cubic yards of soil available. By digging these out, which, which we would have to, being in the city limits, we would have to get out of that, we could provide both water features, which I'll let Steve touch on when we get to the recreational value, as well as cover material for Newland Park landfill. Now, if we were to buy that same amount of material from a local company, we're talking eight to $10 a cubic yard. Now, that, that $10 to $13 million estimate does not include the cost of the staff, the excavator operator, operation and maintenance of said heavy equipment, the hauling, and fuel. But still, from a financial standpoint, that, that soil has value at least to solid waste for cover material. And you all are fairly aware of the constraints we have with our current borrow mining at, at solid waste. But it would also provide any fill material we need should there be any other projects that, that the county has.
Weston, how long would it take us to use this amount of fill material?
That's a good question. It would probably help us continue with the life of the existing landfill. But we, we haven't done those calculations yet.
Do we have any other properties that the county owns where we could get this, this type of landfill?
This type of soil?
Soil.
San Domingo, sandy soils.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was, I know, I know for, for possible borrow mining, I, I don't think San Domingo is, is considered at all for a new landfill. But, but for, for borrow material, the, the closer you are to the landfill, the best. The current, the current landfill situation utilizes off-road dump trucks that can carry significantly more material. And hence their name, they don't go on the road because they would tear up the road being 50 tons and, and up. So, these would have to be done with, with dump trucks. But it would provide material that, that would be beneficial to.
Okay, we don't want to tell the LLC about this $10 to $13 million value of this soil, do we? Just in case they may want to keep it?
Do you think you could get, get mining in this and excavate that much soil out of there?
I think the state is favorable for, for the public good. I mean, the, the county landfill, if we are not able to operate, I, I see, I see issues with maybe a private entity doing it. And, you know, is there a market for it? We would rather control our, our borrow sources. Is this as close to the landfill as I would like? No, it is close to, close enough to nail or mill. That is a straight shot. So, again, this is something to consider. Again, the, the $10 to $13 million is purely if we were buying the amount of material estimated. It does not include, but still, I, I believe, and, and again, with the timeframe, it's hard to really get into the weeds of this. If we looked at how long it would take us to mine this, are there any other parcels near us? Something near the landfill we would need to consider. But if we were developing this, this parcel into a park, this would provide water features that I think, if you came in driving, if you remember, the access point is through the center, and I'll, I'll put the mouse to let people see, through the center of this farm, you would, you would drive through with, with two ponds on both sides, which I think would be, would be pretty stunning, as well as knowing that it helped cover, literally, the, the landfill.
So, so you see this landfill excavation in conjunction with the park? Like, so the landfill excavation would be first?
I think other, I would think the landfill excavation would have to happen before any sort of water-related activities would be proposed. I, I, I would think, like, I mean, Henry Parker's a good example. The current turf ball fields are part of an adaptation process. They were not, all the ball fields were not put in at once.
You were saying.
This was, Siri's talking to us. So, so, yeah, so, so with Henry Parker, the, the field, the, the, that property has adapted over time to the needs of the county. So, this is something that we could come in, we could formalize, and I'll let Steve go into some of the proposed uses, and long-term have a pond that could provide material. And which, so I think the borrow mining permit would be easier to obtain than if we were able to pump from, pump down one pond into the other so we could dig deeper. That, that groundwater appropriation permit may be harder to obtain, but we could get even more material if, if we're able to do that. And, and again, it's quality material based on the soil maps.
If, if this property had to become available, and you weren't figuring out getting this dirt anyway, I mean, you, we're getting cover material from where you're getting it from now, right?
The, the footprint that we're getting it from now is growing limited. And we're hitting large pockets of clay, which is not conducive to cover material. It's good for the new cells, and that, that'll help us when we, like Dallas had earlier on the agenda, the, the, was it Cell 9? That helps us with, with the construction of Cell 9, but not with, with cover material, so.
But then some of the land that we're buying, it's going to have to build on it too.
Hopefully, hopefully, yes. Yeah, if, if we can acquire all that, all that we're interested in, we will have some borrow, borrow areas there. And this will be less of a priority. But, but I, I wanted to touch on the potential of this, that, that recreation can have ponds for kayaking or sailing without wave, learning to sail without wave action, whatever, we could go there, fishing. However, if we have a borrow area closer to the landfill, that's, that's what we would look at.
Are there any restrictions? I'm not quite sure which parts of this property are over the Paleo Channel. Are there any restrictions as to what we can do with the Paleo Channel as far as how deep we can dig it?
Um, we would not dig in the Paleo Channel. Let me, if I can go back to this, this map, and this doesn't show the, the full, the full property. However, this blue line here on the left is, if you follow the mouse, is one of the streams, which is the property line. This here is the other property line. This is the center of the site. And this dashed blue line is the Paleo Channel down here. We would be looking at not impacting that at all, or, or worst case, maybe putting hiking trails through there like Henry Parker has now.
And those pits are actually far.
They are further north.
Yeah, north.
Yes, so they, they are out of the Paleo Channel. What, what could, so, so in the case of, if we had ponds over the Paleo Channel and somebody spilled oil, that's now contaminated the Paleo Channel, whereas there isn't that concern. We're, we're not polluting that drinking, the pristine paleo.
Any wetlands are non-title wetlands, correct?
Yes, yes, this is not tightly influenced at all.
Critical areas doesn't.
Yeah, this is not, this does not apply to critical, you know, critical areas such like the, the, for Pirate's Wharf, for example, what, what we've learned, and, and we can go down that road tonight, too. From the water to Whitehaven Road is all in the critical areas. So, a lot of the stuff that was proposed in the plan that was done previously, it would be an uphill battle, if not impossible, to do some of what was proposed in that plan because regulations have changed over time, and the critical area boundary covers almost all, not all, but, but almost all of the farm side of Pirate's Wharf. Do you have something more?
Yeah, I mean, speaking of environmental stuff, you know, obviously, there's been some disturbance of the land there, you know. I mean, do we have any idea if there's any other, could there be any surprises from an environmental perspective? Or do we know that, you know, with, some work's been done there, and it doesn't look to be very severe. But do we know, I mean, you know, we buy this, and, yeah. What kind of surprises could there be, or, you know, how, how would we make sure that wouldn't happen from, you know, environmental impact?
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a great question. Typically, with, with property acquisitions, and we're, of course, running close to the deadline, they'll do a, there's a Phase 1 and Phase 2. They call them NEPA documents. And, and the Phase 1 tends to be a title search. So, if you're looking at who has owned the property in the past, and you see an industrial activity, or you see a gas station from the '30s, that's, that's cause for concern because there could be underground tanks. So, as part of the, the title search, we're prepared, if, if there is consensus from council, and I will be asking for that at, at the end of this presentation. If there's consensus from council, we, we can have the environmental title search done in, in a short, short manner. The Phase 2, which gets a little more involved, and typically only triggers if you have some concerning reports in the Phase 1, they'll do soil tests. So, they'll do borings around where they think the gas station used to be, or the underground tanks used to be, and test for hydrocarbons and other contaminants that, that could, could be a brownfield. But from what we've seen out on the site, and, and if you haven't been out there, I'd love to get you out there, it's upland sandy pines. It's, it's, it's really pretty. I've not had one mosquito, except when you get down to the, the creek areas where it drops down significantly. But, but it's, it's, it's beautiful, beautiful property. If, if I may, let me, let, I want to hand things over to Steve, and then, then we'll be glad to take any and all questions.
You're up. Thank you for having us. I'm sorry I missed the, the last meeting, but appreciate the opportunity to, to talk about this opportunity. One of the things I heard from the last meeting was, was council's desire to hear potential ideas as, as far as usage.
We asked for a plan, not ideas. We asked for a plan.
Well, we don't, I can, what I'd like to do is present what we, what we think would be proper usage.
But that was, that was what Mr. Cannon said, a plan, right, Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
You wanted the feasibility study done. Just kidding, just kidding.
An engineer's study.
Can we rewind the tape?
We don't have a master plan for anything like this in a month. That would take longer to, to do something like that, and would take more vetting with the public to do that. But I, I think we have some, some good thoughts as to what the potential use could be. And I'd like to also touch on what I feel is the, the value of this opportunity, which is very unique to the county. In terms of usage, I mentioned we don't have a master plan at this point. But, but I think there is support, and you heard that from Mr. McCain as well, and the NRCAC, that could meet a public need and also possibly generate some revenue in making this a low-impact recreational area. Low-impact recreation could include a number of, of different things. Weston's mentioned a few. Could include hiking trails, could include biking trails, could include camping, primitive camping. If there were water features there, it could include fishing and those types of low-impact recreation opportunities. That would have a very low impact, not, not just in the type of activity, but also on, on, Weston mentioned the Paleo Channel, and environmental impact would have a, a low impact, that type of usage at a facility like this. If we went in a direction like that, our ideal situation, what our first option would be is to seek a public-private partnership, the private helping to manage a facility like that if you're into camping and reservations and those types of things, that a private entity could help manage, manage that on behalf of the county, and would also provide us some opportunities for some revenue to help offset the, the loss of, of some of the tax revenue that we've referenced here earlier. Part of why we think that could work, and there's other uses, potential usage that you could do, but I think this is the direction that we would like to see things go. But part of why we think that is some of the feedback that we received in the recent update of the LPPRP. Two of the things that, and you can go to the next one. Two of the things that we heard, two of the top five things that people said that they'd like, they'd like to see more of in terms of recreation is a desire for more trails and a desire for more opportunities for camping. Now, whether that happens at this site or at other sites, you know, certainly, that could be up for debate and, and up for discussion. But we feel like that there is public interest, and we've heard that not just through the LPPRP, but through, through other avenues, through our commissions and rec councils and things of that nature. So, we, we feel like there is some public interest in these types of amenities, and we feel like this site could, could be a potential site, at least to, to meet some of that public demand. Now, I do feel like there is public demand and that there would be public interest in this type of activity. But I do want to qualify, you know, especially in terms of the LPPRP, you all know that's a planning document. And it's a snapshot in time as to what the public perceives that the needs are and what, what we perceive the needs to be. But as we all know, sometimes those needs change over time. And, you know, you can look no further than, than what we've done at the athletic complex. And I know West Metro Core came up at the last meeting, it wasn't long ago, and this precedes me, but it wasn't long ago that we were proposing to build additional soccer fields at the athletic complex. And, and the West Metro Core is going to be, become a soccer complex. And you look at what's happened the last couple of years, they've built 10 fields out at Fruitland, they've built six fields out in Pittsville, and between that and Crown, you know, you could be in a situation very quickly where, where you're overbuilt in terms of soccer fields. So, so needs change over time, and, and we adapt to, to changing needs. And the LPPRP is just a snapshot in time of what those needs are. But you look at Parker, you know, we actually took soccer fields offline to, to be able to do the things that we did. So, the point, the point I'm making is that needs change over time, and we feel like this property could meet that need or meet other needs. And that kind of gets me to, to my last point, and that is the, the value that this opportunity presents. I feel like, you know, Mr. McCain noted it in his comments, but I feel like this is a very tremendous and unique opportunity that the county has at this moment that we may not get again. And I say that for, for several reasons. Number one, this, this being a land donation as opposed to an acquisition. In our land preservation plan, we didn't recommend two hundred and thirty-five acres of acquisition, uh, to meet a need, and if we were sitting here saying that we're gonna have to pay a million dollars or pay half a million dollars, uh, we, we wouldn't be sitting here having the conversation. But the fact that this is a donation, uh, makes this a unique opportunity, uh, for the county. A second, a second reason why I feel like this is a very unique opportunity is that it's an unrestricted donation. Uh, when you look at West Metro or Pirate's Wharf, or some of these others that we've acquired with POS funding, there are certain restrictions with those properties, and if needs do change, it, it's hard to flip those and to do different things with them because you've acquired it with state funds, and, and there, and there are restrictions there. Uh, this would not be the case. It'd be unrestricted, uh, to meet any needs that the county has. Whether it's the need that, that I've outlined here in terms of recreational value, or, or some of the things that Weston's outlined, the county would have complete flexibility to meet whatever need either exists or might exist in the future, and that opportunity would, um, I think, hold a lot of value. In fact, I, I think that's where the real value is. And in terms of council, I think any, any development that we would do there would certainly, um, be part of a public process in terms of capital programming and, and the things that we would have to do to, to develop a property like this. So, uh, the last I'll mention, and Mr. McCain mentioned this as well, is just the, the unique opportunity that this is contiguous to the athletic complex, which, um, is, is kinda the crown jewel of our park system. Uh, that's our premier park, and to have two hundred-plus acres right next to that where we could either potentially use it to, to complement what we have there, or to meet other needs of the county, um, right next to Parker is a unique opportunity that, that likely will never come again as far as, uh, at that property and with the county. So, so when you put all those things together, you know, I'll defer to Weston here as far as, you know, official recommendations, but you, you look at those factors, and I think, um, they're certainly a need, and I cer, I certainly think a, a wonderful opportunity that the county has that, that we'd like to take advantage of, so.
So, yeah, this is, this concludes our presentation. Um, ultimately, we would, we would like, um, consensus from the council if, if there is interest in pursuing this any, any longer. As you've hopefully, uh, learned fro, from us, we, we are, um, in favor of accepting the donation, and we see lots of opportunity with it, but, um, with that, we, we realize that there are concerns with, with other properties that, um, the county has, has obtained, and we'll be glad to talk about any of those.
Thank you. Any other, any questions, John?
You mentioned it was next to the Parker Complex, and I think this has been answered before, but I've been asked this. So, do you see any ability to expand the ball fields out into their kinda contiguous, I mean, or does it run into the, the creek area?
It runs into the creek. I think you would have the potential to expand, that you would not be able to, from what we've seen out there, you would not be able to walk from one to the other, so you'd have to access it from the Connolly Mill side. But, uh, certainly, that could be something on the table, that if you needed to add ball fields, you know, people have to get in their car and drive around, but, um, but that could be one of, one of the potential opportunities.
And we can look at whether we find some way of bridging that, uh, creek or, uh, along the railroad that runs on the eastern side of, um, primarily the Connolly Mill parcel, you could connect it that way, where it's, it's shorter than having to go out to Jersey or Jersey Road or, um, thirteen to get up to Connolly Mill. So we, we would look at that as a way of connecting it, but that would, that would be down the road.
And, and the main access is through the farm on the north, then?
Yes, there's an easement running through the center of the farm. There's, there's a clump of trees. I'm guessing a house used to be there, maybe. But, but yeah, it's, it's directly through, through that field.
And you had mentioned, kind of in passing, about with the, the borrow pit, about, it would have to be out of the city, we'd have to be de-annexed. Can you expand on that?
The city does not allow borrow pits. So we, we would have to, whether it's de-annex or un-annex, whatever, whatever the appropriate word is. Um, the, my understanding, the annexation occurred in nineteen eighty-seven. Um, the site was previously zoned industrial, um, its proximity to the railroad. They thought Northwood and the, the growth there was going to expand up into that way. Where that did not happen, uh, the developers then looked at a residential option, uh, went to great lengths to get it rezoned, and, um, since then have since changed, changed the tune as well. So, um, yeah, I, I think wi, within city limits, unless we get some sort of exemption through them, I think it would benefit us to, to take it out of the corporate limits of Salisbury, and then that would allow us to legally, uh, dig it, of course, with, with state permits.
If there's consensus on the council to do this, will there be something in the CIP for the coming year about this?
We, we didn't put anything in our original draft of the CIP, and that, that would be something we'd.
But we're, we're, we're not done with the CIP yet, so, so we, we could, we could put, um, I won't say feasibility study, but, but we, we could, uh, we, what we, what we need to do is outline a plan of how, what we're going to do. We would probably want to, um, reach out to the private sector, where we do want a public-private partnership, and get their take on it. Um, you know, is there a K O A or some other entity out there that, that does these things and can help us lay it out? And then we, we go from there. Um, yeah.
Hey, John?
Joe, do you?
No, I, you know, my big issue is, like you mentioned before, all the property that we own that we've not done anything with. You know, I, I wasn't on the council at the time, but I remember all the, um, excitement and all about the Hershey property. It's, sitting down there is what, hunting property and, um, farming property. You know, it's never been used for any recreation, partly other than maybe somebody hunting on it. Um, I was on the council when, um, Mr. Mackey's was exclaiming how much we needed the West Side Park. Had to be done right away. Well, here we are, ten years later, it's never been touched. You know, so we've got the Wollston Switch property, east of Wollston Switch Road, um, that was, I think, a donation also. Uh, we ended up with that through the Winter Place Park property. You know, it, it's used for hunting, you know, it's. I, I see this as, you know, an opportunity, if, if it was followed through on, but I don't, I still don't see the plan. All I see is the ideas, and I think everybody had these same ideas with the Hershey property, and everybody had ideas when it came to the West Side Park, so here we are again.
Was the Hershey property POS funds as well?
What, which one's the Hershey property?
Pirates.
Pirates, oh, yeah, yeah, okay, okay. So, so as I, as I touched on, um, with the Hershey property, Pirate's Wharf, uh, a lot of stuff that they, they, a plan was put together prior, prior to us, at, that the critical areas will not allow.
But we still have property there that we could do something with. I mean, it's not a hundred percent.
Correct, correct, and a, a work group has been formed that's examining that. Now, the, the West Metro Core property, as I mentioned previously, and, and I'm sure you, you all are aware, the, the program, open space, once you acquire it, and sort of one of the, as, as Steve mentioned on, uh, the last slide, um, once you acquire a property with the POS funds, there are strings attached. Now, what, what we've talked about internally is let's see what we can do to offload the parcels we're not using. We, we're not into the farm rental business. We are not into the hunting property rental business.
Selling, selling some of those properties now?
Offloading the ones that we no longer have a, have a need for. Now, I, my understanding.
First time I've heard that.
Well, that's, it's, it's a, it's a reasonable consideration. Uh, why, you know, county property is sometimes acquired with a future vision in mind, and whether it's politics change or regulations change, um, the intended use is no longer there, and I think that's with the West Metro Core, um, the intended use of more soccer fields. Um, I think the other thing that happened about that time, and, and Steve can correct me if I'm wrong, is that, that was acquired right before the recession. So, the, the West Metro Core.
Two thousand nine.
Two, two, okay, so, so about the time that, that funds are drying up, and the, I'm sure the question, council at the time, was do you invest in soccer fields when you're, you're giving employees furlough days and you're struggling to pave roads because of H R money?
That purchase was strictly made because we were concerned that if we didn't buy it, we would, um, the state was gonna take back the prod, the program open space funding because we were in a recession. That's why that purchase was made.
Well, and, and it was, it was touted by the rec, wrecking parks that we needed another park too, so.
So, so we need to dig into, with, with the program open space, how, how do we offload these parcels? And can, I, I don't know if we can use this donation as, hey, we wanna offload this, here's space that we plan to do something for, for open space. I'm, I'm not certain. So we, we need to look into it, because again, I, I think your concern's legitimate. I think, um, having property that we have no intended use for, we, we really should try to offload it. Um, I, I don't think the POS funding and the, the strings in play make it friendly to easily offload. Um, but, but we're, we're honestly looking into that.
Well, Mr. Cannon, I think, me, mentioned harvesting the timber. I think we got an apple out of that barrel here not long ago, and they wanted to cut the timber on them.
Yes.
You know, so I don't think, I don't think that's gonna be a big income.
That delayed things, too. That, that definitely delayed things, too.
Provider down there, and, um, I know Mr., um, Councilman Matt Holloway was concerned with, um, people still being able to do their, what, DMX biking on this.
Offered ATVs.
ATVs, and I don't see that included in here.
No, there, there is a, there is a liability with that. I, I do think, um, it would be nice if, um, citizens had a place to do that. I, I think we're looking for something a little more low-impact.
So, so if this is acquired, um, no trespassing signs are gonna go up for those folks, right?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I think the, I think the potential upside outweighs the downside. I just, you know, long and short of it.
I do have something.
John, good.
Uh, you know, Councilman Joe Hall, there, four years ago, or five years ago, this council looked at surplus and, uh, uh, county council, or county-owned property. Uh, we were provided with lists, and we went through the list, and we didn't take any action on any of them. I think we found one piece that we tried to sell, and it was, it, the offer was so far below market value that we decided not to sell it. But I think we looked at, uh, surplus county property five years ago.
I don't recall that, but, um.
And we can, I think it would be certainly worthwhile to look at it again, but I don't think that should be considered in this issue. We're looking at a million-dollar gift in this issue, and, uh, we've seen what the potential is for the sand and, uh, sandy loam soil of, uh, up to ten million or over ten million dollars, which I think is a real asset. And, uh, my, my recommendation is that we go ahead and accept this property. You know, in nineteen oh five, the dam broke at Humphrey Dam, and then it wasn't until nineteen twenty that the city council or someone decided to buy the bog where Air Park is now. And let's face it, that city park certainly is an asset to our community, and I think this has the potential of being one of those types of assets. You can't deny that the city park can offer something to this entire community that brings people into this community. And this has a, that same potential. I think it's absolutely wonderful. And saying that, I'd like to make a motion that we go out of the open work session and go back into the legisla, legislative works, the legislative session, and, uh, with the purpose of accepting this offer pending the environmental impact study.
It was a motion on the floor. It's not really an appropriate motion. I mean, it's just asking for a consensus, I guess.
Like, public hearings and stuff like that before we do anything like this?
Is there a second to review this?
Well, I'd second it for discussion.
Okay, second for discussion. Um, I'm personally not in favor of making any formal statements. I don't, I don't have any problem coming up with a consensus, John. I think we could do that. There's six of us here, not seven, and I'd rather do it when we have all seven members here to do something formal.
Right, in, in certain respects, I agree with you, but, yeah, we were looking for consensus tonight in any case.
Right, well, we can do that, but I wouldn't mind an informal consensus, but I, I don't wanna go back into the, well, I don't know, it's a vote, it's on the floor, it's a discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Nay.
Okay, right, okay. Consensus, starting with John. Favor or not favor?
Pardon me?
Are you in favor or not in favor?
Oh, I'm in, of what?
Of the prop, of the property.
Of the touches?
Yes.
Yes, I'm in favor.
Mark?
Yeah, I'd say I'm still pretty skeptical. Um, I, I do see the upside to it, and I do. If all these plans come together, I will be very happy to eat some crow, go out there, and publicly admit I was wrong. But, um, you know, given past history, I, I think that it has the potential to end up as another piece of land we're not using. And I know we can sell it. It's always possible to sell. Um, I don't see that as being a realistic option. But, um, yeah, I mean, please, please prove me wrong, prove my skepticism wrong, so. I, I will be happy to admit I'm wrong if, if this stuff, you know, does occur, so.
Sort of no. Matt?
Uh, yes.
Ernie?
No.
Joe?
I'm gonna, you know, like I say, kinda echo some of the things that Mark said, but, you know, our history of not doing, taking care of what we've got, you know, is, um, is not good, so I'm gonna say no.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it. Um, I've also talked to Larry Dodd numerous times, and Larry has stated emphatically that he's in favor of it, so you, you've got four there.
Okay. So, we, we appreciate your time, and I, I think the best course of action on our end, and Steve and his staff, is to have a plan of action and, and stay in touch with council about what, how we're moving forward with it, so, so Councilman Kilmer can eat crow.
Mr. Cannon, right?
Be glad to.
Get an Easton Shore crow recipe.
I, I have one more thing I'd like to say about that. I've been out to visit the site, and I know you have, Mr. Joe Holloway. And I've seen the ponds, and I've seen the sites, and the pines are not ready to harvest. Uh, but the site is absolutely fabulous. It's high sandy soil, as, uh, Mr. Miller stated, and, uh, Weston stated, it's five to eight feet higher, there's sections that are forty-eight feet higher. This can be absolutely a fabulous recreational area.
That question, if it's such a great piece of property, why do the people wanna get rid of it?
It's only good for recreation. It's never gonna be developed. It's, it's not gonna run so well.
Okay, so you're looking at private partnership.
Well, they're not gonna give it to.
They wouldn't get a tax write-off if they gave it, if they sold it.
They could've sold it to somebody to, to do a K O A, or, I mean, if, that, that's what gets me. I just, I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong. Hope so.
But, but my, my offer stands. If, if anybody would like to go out there, I'll gladly, um, take you out. Um, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I obtain a motion to adjourn open work session so we can go into closed session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Next, now can you offer consensus for the, for the council?